Okay, we have a roll call, please.
Mr. Corman?
Here.
Ms. Palmer?
Here.
Mr. Person?
Here.
Mr. Prince?
Here.
Ms. Brier?
Here.
Mr. Zwicker?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
Thanks, Jason. So, we're gonna start off the agenda tonight with a very special presentation. Terry Agashyama.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here, Mr. Mayor, Council President Corman, and council members, and all of our honored guests that are here tonight. We're here to celebrate our very first graduating class of the Renton Academy of City Services. Twenty-eight outstanding citizens who have dedicated nine Tuesdays from 6:00 to 8:00 PM every week to learn about their city. I think the fact that they have hung in there with us, have learned a lot, and have been joyful about it is a pleasure and honor for all of us to work with them. It was a nine-week course. The class size was limited to thirty, and when we started this, we weren't sure, and it filled up very quickly as we did registration. The mayor challenged just a few years ago when he was doing the city budget committee and said, "There must be a way for citizens to get better connected with their community, to better connect to their city, and learn about the things we're doing." So, we took his initiative, easily turned it over to Norma, Bonnie, Teresa, Wendy, that whole group, and got out of the way because when you turn it over to them, it just happens. So, I would like them to stand so I can thank the staff for putting this together. We're on the way. Because you can have the best idea, and if you don't have people who are dedicated to making equality, it doesn't happen. So, tonight, we have twenty-eight, as I said, citizens who have made this an amazing, amazing program and very first graduating class. We also had a lot of volunteers, and of course, when Norma asks you, you become a volunteer, as you all know. Have you ever tried to say no to her? So, we had representatives from all the departments that stepped up and helped make presentations. They got to travel around the city. The group went to the museum. You went to the senior center. They were up at the shops, Fire Station 13. We've over to the museum, and they also got to learn about our technology in the city. So, we hope that they had fun doing it. We can only tell you that it's been a pleasure for us in our department to be able to host this, and we appreciated the challenge. What's also remarkable is we asked for no additional funding to do this. We did it all within our own budget and for people volunteering and giving their time. So, that tells you about your staff and your commitment you have from the people here. So, what we'd like to do, they just celebrated on the other side, so you had way too much sugar for tonight, and you're being very, very behaved here. So, we're going, and they've all got to know each other very well through these nine weeks. We're gonna have them come up, and so they can have their picture taken with all of you, if that would be fine. So, could all of our academy graduates please stand and let us applaud you for your work? And we'd like all of you to come up to the front so we can get your picture with the mayor and the council.
No pressure.
No pressure.
All ones to the back along the back row, if I could. And, yep, right in that area. Council, they're already in position.
We've done this a ton.
If I need, we can bring in some chairs.
You could just pull it back, drop it.
You'll be friendly.
I think chairs is a good idea, actually.
That's the best. Expect to see some of them.
Everybody does a T T.
Yeah, knocks all the plaques off.
Christian's pretty loaded.
Camera's over. We're all just gonna be on television up here.
What a colorful group.
All right. And if I could just have you come insert us a little bit, right in there. Okay. Great, big smiles, everybody. I'm gonna hit flash. And, big smiles. Show me those blue teeth from the cut. There we go. Photoshop that up.
Thank you, Kelly.
You bet.
No, because I knew that my teeth would be blue.
Nice to see you, Dan.
Do you have anything for audience copy?
We'll put everything back together here. We would also like to let the citizens know, if they're interested, in the next time we have the academy, we'll be doing evaluations both with the staff and with our attendees, if they can contact us in community services, and we can let them know when we'll have another session going. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Terry. Council, if you see people leaving right now, I don't want you to be offended by that, but Bonnie Waresich told them they didn't have to stay for the meeting. Okay, very nice. Thank you, Terry, and thanks for all the employees that participated in this academy. We appreciate it. So, we're gonna move on to a public hearing. Ewan.
So, I know budget is never an interesting topic, but I've never seen this larger group just-
Disappear.
Get out of the bar. So, good evening, council, and this is the public hearing for our mid-bandwidth adjustment. I just want to see, yes. Earlier this evening, we have presented to council a more complete overview of the city's revenue expenditure and so forth and budget adjustment. In this portion of the presentation, I actually reduce some of those details and focus on the information that is more pertinent for the public hearing purpose. And again, what we do typically in the mid-bandwidth adjustment is to update our revenue projections and also make changes to our expenditure plan and make any housekeeping adjustments to incorporate council action taken previously. And to make all the budget adjustment to take effect, we have to actually have four legislations that council will need to take action on. One is an ordinance to set 2014 property tax levy amount, and one will be to reduce water utility tax rate to reflect the elimination of fire hydrant-related utility tax we put in place in 2011. We have some minor fee adjustment proposed, and lastly, to adopt the ordinance to make all those changes. And all these legislations in draft form are currently on file with City Clerk's office, so if anyone in the public interested to see more detail can get a copy from the City Clerk's One of the biggest, really the largest, city's general fund revenue source is our property tax. And at this time, we have about $33 million collected in 2013, and we are projecting that to be $35 million in 2014. And as you can see, that in 2013, we actually required to lower how much we assess we levy because we assumed, there's assumption that our tax rate is limited to $0.30 per $1,000 of assessed value. But earlier this year, we were notified by King County Assessors Office that this is not correct, and because the city is annexed to the library district, we actually can exceed the $0.30 per thousand. And so, there will be a correction made in 2013 to recognize that, and so, that's part of the 2014's property tax levy will do. And basically, we will restate our 2014's base levy by truing up the 2013 amount first, and then allow us to add 1% of permitted growth under state law. And then, there's new construction and other corrections included in the final levy amount. So, in the end, the 2014 proposed property tax levy is $35.5 million. Just to get the math a little bit clearer than what I just said, basically, we are correcting our 2013 base levy amount, and then add the 1% allowed growth, which gives us the 2014 base levy, and that's really the 1% above the 2013 correct levy amount. However, because we had to lower our actual levy collection in 2013, so when we compare to the lowered collection, the proposed base, 2014 base is actually 5.5% above that amount. As I mentioned, in addition to the 1% growth, we do get the new construction valuation and also relivy our prior-year refunds. That's, King County will add that on automatically anyway. And we do, because we did not collect the correct amount in 2013, we are allowed to collect that over the next three years. So, we will be splitting the $1.8 million over three-year period. The combined $35.5 billion will translate into about $0.30 per $1,000 of assessed value in 2014, and in comparison, this year, we're at $0.30, and the difference of five cents will equate about $16 on a $300,000 home. In addition to property tax adjustment, we are also proposing some minor fee adjustments. One is, we are proposing a new monthly parking pass applicable to the main street parking lot, and this will then allow users to park there more than four hours. Current limit is free for four hours, and this will allow them to park for full day. And the fee will be at $35, but when we add the tax administrative fee, which is charged by Diamond Parking, it will be $42.32 per month, and this is exactly the same rate we're charging on the monthly pass for the parking garage. And in addition, we are making some true-up channel correction. As you know, the city made some adjustment to our business license fee in 2013 for regular business licenses that we did not, at the time, catch some of other minor fees or non-regular business license fees that should also be adjusted so they are in parity with the regular business license. One is the temporary license, which allows a business to conduct temporary license for ninety days, and the other two are penalties on non-renewal or penalty for failure to obtain business license. Most of those fees really related to the work, amount of work involved in getting them and also trying to maintain the parity between the regular business license and those activities. As we also mentioned earlier, that we have some preliminary school impact fee information. We put in the fee schedule just so in case council approved that, and people can get information, and also, we can take effect in January 1, 2014. And the proposal at this time is, East Coast School District is proposing to increase their single-family impact fee per unit, per housing unit, from $37.38 to $57.30, and they currently do not charge a multifamily school impact fee, so it will be also no multifamily fee for 2014. And at this time, Kent's proposal is the same as 2013, so they'll change in Kent's school impact fees. And Renton School District, we're actually, they're actually proposing lower their current single-family impact fee from $63.95 to $54.55 in multifamily units, just slightly above the current rate. And also, we're cleaning up the fee schedule by removing Carco Theater rental fee, just because we changed our operation as Carco Theater, there's no longer needed to have the fee schedule there. We are also making a correction to NSF fee, the non-sufficient funds, or our bounce check fee. We actually have been charging $25 over the last three, four years, and this is just our fee schedule, actually showing fifteen, which is incorrect, and so, this is to make that correction. And overall, our general fund revenue will be adjusted from $100.8 million to $103.4 million for 2013, and $103 million to $106.7 million in 2014, with various adjustments, including the property tax I just mentioned, as well as self-tax and other taxes. And overall, the general fund expenditure proposed adjustments really primarily to true-up the grant-related expenditures, but also, there are some staffing adjustment in general fund, as well as the elimination of our hydrant fee will be adjusted in 2014. And more specifically, general fund expenditure and staffing change being proposed includes, we are proposing to add two FTE in CED, Community Economic Development, for permit processing, basically is really recognizing the permit activity, the department, and also, they will be operating or reclassing a positions. We are also proposing to continue three limited-term public works inspectors, and those are funded by project reimbursements, and it's budget-neutral. We just want to have authority to continue those positions. We are converting one accounting assistant's reposition to a GIS analyst's reposition to make the permanent the GIS analyst we have been, we had over the last three years, and we will be eliminating the temporary position or limited-term position the staff is currently occupying. As I mentioned, we have some grants, and one of them is a SAFER grant, which will add six firefighters in the fire department. We also need to true-up how much we budget for our 911 cost center, and the total budget adjustment for that line item will be $275,000, but majority of that is because we have not budgeted sufficiently in past years, so the true increase in 2014 is about 4%, which is $100,000 for Renton, and the other 175 is just catching up for past years under budgeting. One thing we are doing this year is that in 2013, the state legislature passed a law to allow water utilities to provide fire hydrant maintenance operating service again. And so, in 2011, because there's a court case prohibiting that, we actually created a special utility tax that water utility will pay general fund, and then general fund in turn will pay about $200,000 a year to water utility to perform the service. And so, by virtue of passing this law this year, we no longer need to do that, so we're making both utility tax adjustment as well as cost adjustment to eliminate both sides of the equation. It's a budget-neutral transaction. Again, recognizing grant-related costs such as community development block grant, SAFER grant, and emergency management grant. What we have not included in 2014's budget adjustment at this time is costs related to labor contracts. As council are aware, that we have put some offers on the table, but unions hasn't, not all the unions has accepted them, and so, at this time, we think it will take a few more months before we know how much, what that number will look like. So, for the time being, we penciled in what our last offer on the table, so we can look what it looked like with that numbers in there. So, the red line basically shows what our personnel costs with the proposed offers on the table, and when we add that to what our adjusted budget for general fund, we basically, our revenue and expenditure will equal in 2014. One other thing I want to mention is that there's always a question or talk about the balanced budget. Again, each jurisdiction may have a different definition of balanced budget, but for Renton, for the city of Renton, we have been functioning at using operating revenue, supporting our current operating expenditure as our definition for balanced budget. So, every year, when we say we have budget gap and we need to bring the expenditure revenue together, we're talking about ongoing revenue and ongoing expenditures. At state level, the definition actually is much more generous, that is, they can use all the fund balance in the general fund, that's a resource, plus their current revenue to offset whatever the current operating cost is. And so, they basically can consider in 2014, in our case, $117 million as their resources and spend the whole thing. And again, that creates a sustainability issue because you don't have the $12.8 million every year. That's your savings account, that's you set aside over many years to have that balanced. And so, the city of Renton has always been looking at operating revenue versus operating expenditures, our balanced budget. And I want to say that more and more municipalities are looking at the budget, balanced budget the same way as we're doing now, and I think the state even are looking more towards the operating budget and revenue. So, with 2014 proposed general fund revenue expenditure, we should be able to maintain our fund balance at $12.9 million. That is our target of 12% of general fund expenditure. This is just another way to look at that. Basically, all the assumptions and growth rate we put in place to fully project out what we are looking at, the revenue expenditure and the overlaid green bar is the proposed labor contracts, and as you can see, that over time will, at least based on current projection, is not going to sustain, our revenue will not sustain the projected operating expenditure in the future. And again, every year, we will, when we bring the budget to council, they will be balanced. So, basically, we'll be reevaluating our revenue at beginning of next year to see where we are, and if necessary, we'll be bringing the cost down to match the revenue. And unless council wants to do something different, but that will be, you will receive a balanced budget proposal. And that's basically just a general fund side, and which really, our operations supported primarily from tax revenue. That's why we pay a lot of attention to general fund. But we do have many other funds, and here are some examples of adjustments in other funds, and we'll be adjusting or aligning our transportation capital project fund based on the timing of the project, as well as the newly-approved TIP. We'll be recognizing some grants from FAA for the airport, and also, work need to be done at the airport capital projects. We will be updating utilities in direct charge for plan review and inspection services. Basically, they share a portion of the development service staff, staffing costs. A storm drainage capital project will be incorporated. And the last item is a longer-term, ongoing operating cost item. We are currently looking at the increase proposed by our insurance pool for both liability as well as property insurance premium at $42,000 and $43,000 respectively. The property insurance premium is about 14% increase, and liability insurance is about 10% increase. The primary cause of the higher property tax, property insurance premium is because the trueing up or review of our covered value, or replacement value of our property, and we do anticipate additional premium increase in 2015. So, all combined, we are looking at bringing the adjusted 2013 budget from currently at $300.5 million to, actually, a reduction to $299.5 million, and it's because primarily some capital projects timeline adjustment. And then, 2014's budget, total city budget, will be changed from $219 million to $221 million, basically. Over the two years, combined, all funds, we are making an adjustment of $1.3 million, so it's a pretty small modest adjustment in comparison to some other budget adjustments we had. And combined, two-year budget, citywide, is, with this adjustment included, will be for $520.4 million. So, that's a quick overview of proposed budget adjustment, and in terms of process, tonight, we're doing public hearing and reviewing our property tax levy proposal and what we're adjusting on our appropriations. And if, after public hearing, council can report out your council committee report at next week's council meeting, and we will then see if there's any changes from council at that time, and then we'll do ordinance first reading and then adoption hopefully in December 2nd. So, that's the process and the overview of our banjo.
Thank you, Ewan. Any questions from council? I know this is your second run at this, so you're calling out your questions during community as a whole. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the public that wanted to address the budget adjustment? Okay, was there any correspondence, Jason?
No correspondence, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. What's wish to the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman?
Move that a public hearing be closed?
Second.
Move it, Mr. Corman, seconded by Mr. Person, that the public hearing be closed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, thank you, Ewan.
Thank you.
Moving on to administrative report, Mr. Covington.
Mr. Mayor, I have two items. Wanted to let the council and the public know that the Upper Cedar River Trail between Williams Avenue North and the Senior Activities Center will be closed for renovation from today through December 13th. We have large trees along the trail that have uplifted portions of the concrete walkway. So, we've got a contract that'll remove the walkway and replace it with reinforced concrete while removing the underlying tree roots. If anybody does have questions, they can give us a call at 430-6600, and we'll try to provide information. And then, as the council and the community is aware, the Philippines have been hit by two disasters in the last month. First, October 15th, the Bohal earthquake, which was a 7.2 magnitude earthquake that did some significant damage, and then, on November 8th, the super typhoon Hyun, or Yolanda as it's known in the Philippines, in that country. We've all been watching with great sympathy and interest and sorrow in many cases. Last week, Mayor Law reached out to Violet Escavell, who is our cultural liaison to the Philippine community, and expressing the city's sympathy and offering some support. And in response to his offer, what we could do, Violet provided information. The Philippine-American community of Renton, which is known as Philamcor, launched a campaign after the earthquake to begin to collect funds to provide support and relief to victims there in the Philippines. They specifically wanted their funds to go, and they would be dispersed to appropriate channels so that funds would be used for basic necessities and items that are needed most. As the super typhoon hit, their effort has now been expanded, and they are offering their organization, as they channel funds, as an opportunity for folks in the Renton community if they choose to support any relief efforts there as another alternative for them. Philamcor is a public charity. It's a Washington nonprofit corporation, and donation checks for the disaster relief could be issued to Philamcor, either designated to the Bohal Earthquake Relief Fund or to the Typhoon Relief Fund, or they can just designate to both as folks- designate to both as folks might want. We will post this information on the city's website. We'll also provide information on our cable access channel. And folks can also call our office at 430-425-6500. And we'll provide contact information if people are interested in helping. And I know everybody in the community expresses their tremendous amount of sympathy for the disaster there. It's just been horrific to watch. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Covington. And also, at this moment, I want to just take a quick second to congratulate Council Member Breyer and also Armando Pavoni, who's sitting out in the audience for their successful campaigns for the city council. So Armando, you'll be sitting up here, you can get an idea of what's going on tonight. And I don't know that you get to pick out your seat, but you will be up here. But anyway, congratulations. Moving on to audience comment, we have a couple of people who've signed up to address the council. When I call your name, please come to the podium, give your name and city of residence for the record, and you have five minutes. Howard McComber.
Howard McComber, I live in the Renton Highlands. I think we had a very nice demonstration of volunteerism and public interest when we had the graduation here. I think that's wonderful. I think the one thing that makes our city possible to operate at the wonderful level that we have, that makes it so desirable to live here, is because of volunteerism that is present in our town. And the reason it is, is because we care. And we have a cadre of people who care about what goes on in the town, and they're willing to step forward, put time in and work. And every one of you up there, I've seen all sorts of things, but you lead by example, which is a wonderful thing. Now, I have a little thing to put on this, and that is, we have an area of concern, I have concern. And that is, for the people on the lower half of the economic ladder, countywide median income, we have several areas where we need help. And the one I'm up here talking about today is affordable housing. And the reason we need to have affordable housing, we need to have owner-occupied housing, is because those are people who have skin in the game. They have investment, they have desire, and they are permanent party. They're going to stay around for a while and be volunteers. So we've got the volunteer concept, but we need to have the volunteers continue, and we need to have them increase. Now, in the Sunset area, I appreciate the fact that you've done tremendous things for our islands up there, and the particular areas, the Sunset area of the Highlands. We're having a new library. I didn't get it early enough to get all the things, but I pretty certain that what I did gather is they were moving ahead. And they were going to have a Highlands library, which is wonderful. It's going to be where tent now is, and some of the streets are coming out and some are going in. Wonderful things are happening, so that's improving. And over the Meadowcrest area, where we have the Meadowcrest Early Elementary School, we have a fantastic playground, if you want to call it, super playground, for people who have all kinds of disabilities, which is wonderful. I'm very big on the autistic group. You'll hear more about it when I get through with this. I'll be back for autism, so we're staying on forever. But the most important part of this is that it's improving the area, but we have to have the people who need the low-income housing to stay in the area. We need to have housing, more housing for the people on the lower end, developed. And we need to have owner-occupied housing so people can stay there. I'd love to see higher-paid jobs go through for the tailors, because your big push is we have to be able to afford it. But if we don't have the houses, we can't do it. Now, we're building houses. The point was made that we have increased building going on, which is lovely. The business I'm in, in real estate, love to see it. But all that new housing is more expensive. None of it is for the affordable level, which is the bottom half of median income. It is available, it can be done, but it's going to take city cooperation and help with private people who are willing to go partway. If the city can go partway, we can make affordable, long-term, owner-occupied housing. We're working out the details so that it stays owner-occupied and so that it's where it needs to be in our Renton Sunset area. Yeah, we've got all the details worked out. I'm just here reminding you that this is an area where we need help. This is something that's, that's going to need to be improved from where we are. We'd like to have more owner occupancy. We'd like to have new housing that meets all the codes and the requirements, but more of it, so we can have our area up there, state, continue to be vibrant and an improving area. I love the Highlands. It is the best-kept secret for people who need affordable housing. Most of those units, of course, are full, so we're going to need more units because we have more people. We have an increased population, there, I'm getting close on my time, sorry. We have an increased population coming in, hopefully, like children and whatever else, coming in. We need to have housing for them so they can have affordable housing right there where we have it. Thank you for your help.
Thank you, Howard.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yeah, I just have to say, Howard, I just thank you for your passionate, purposeful advocacy for a segment of our community that, you know, really needs that kind of focus. And yes, you do know that I am on record for saying that, along with affordable housing, we need to have sustainable incomes. There needs to be living wages. People need to be able to have the types of incomes where they can afford to live in a sustainable environment. And just going back to a comment that moved me, that our finance administrator, Ewan Wang, said during her presentation, was a quote, "We need to look at what will build a sustainable future for Renton." My belief is that a large part of that is going to come in the economic development that we can create through creating sustainable employment, building the type of housing units that you are so passionately advocating for, and lifting our boat. So I just want to tell you, just thank you for your passion, and there are others who agree with that, and we'll see what we can do to work collectively to try to create that kind of thriving, shared prosperity for everybody in our city. Thank you.
Okay, next is Charles Seal.
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name's Charles Seal. I reside in the city of Renton, and I'm vice president of the Cascade Neighborhood Association. I would like to thank Norma, Wendy, Teresa, Bonnie, Terry, and all the others that brought the Renton Academy of the City of Services together. I would also like to thank all the department heads and the others that presented us with the behind-the-scenes work in the city. This was a very well-put-together nine weeks, and I learned more than I expected. I know that the city, the workings of the city are very complex, and I thank you all for sharing it. And I hope this is around for many years to come.
Thanks, Charles. Thanks for your participation, too. We appreciate it. Okay, council, moving on to consent agenda. We have 16 items for you to consider. Are there any items that council member would like pulled for discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to pull item K.
Hey, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman?
I would, I move approval of the consent agenda as published minus item K.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Corman, seconded by Mr. Zwicker, that council concur with the consent agenda, minus item K. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Person?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, in our, in the Public Safety Committee, we're continually looking at the manning requirements of the police, fire, public works, everybody. And I would like to refer this to the Public Safety, I move to refer this to Public Safety Committee to discuss what impact it will have.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Zwicker, to move item A to the Public Safety Committee.
Item K.
Item K. Any further discussion? I have one, one question, and I don't know if Commander McClinsey can answer, but I don't know if we have a timeframe under this. When is Public Safety Committee?
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I, just in looking at it right now, it has already come in, it is, says that it will commence on the 18th of November and 2013. One of the issues is we've never, the Public Safety Committee has never seen this before.
Okay.
We have a lot of questions.
And the council hasn't seen it before either.
Right. And we had a lot of questions about, about it, so.
Okay. Okay, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, moving on to unfinished business, Mr. Corman?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Palmer?
Uh, no unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Person?
Uh, no unfinished business.
Mr. Prince?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Brier?
Uh, yes, the finance, the finance committee has one report.
Uh, Finance Committee report, approval of claims and payroll vouchers. The Finance Committee approves for payment on November 18th, 2013. Claim vouchers 325, 342 through 325658. Two rider transfers and one payroll run will benefit withholding payments totaling $5,293,554.27. And payroll vouchers, including 721 direct deposits and 54 payroll checks totaling $1,603,245.19. This is signed by the three committee members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Brier?
I move that council concur with the Finance Committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Brier, seconded by Mr. Person, that council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, Mr. Zwicker?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
And Mr. Taylor?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to resolutions and ordinances, we have three resolutions this evening.
Okay, the first resolution is regarding an interlocal agreement with the East City Gov Alliance. Resolution of the city of Renton, Washington, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an interlocal agreement with the East City Gov Alliance entitled Subscription Agreement.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person?
I move the resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
Been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Zwicker, that this resolution be adopted as read. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. And Jason, we'll hold item C until after the committees had a chance to meet.
Okay, got it. The next resolution is regarding a moratorium on accepting applications for marijuana businesses. Resolution of the city of Renton, Washington, declaring a moratorium, moratorium on accepting applications for business licenses or permits for medical and/or recreational marijuana businesses and establishments involved in the sale, manufacture, distribution, or use of marijuana, directing the setting of a public hearing date and establishing a termination date for the moratorium.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman?
I move adoption of the resolution as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Corman, seconded by Mr. Person, that council adopt the resolution as read. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thanks, Jason. Moving on to new business, Mr. Corman?
I, yes, Mr. Mayor. First up, on the agenda is the election of council president and pro tem for next year. So I presume it's in order, I could?
Yes.
Like to, I would like to go ahead then and make a motion that council elect Don Person to serve as council president in 2014, and Ed Prince to serve as council president pro tem in 2014.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Corman and seconded by Mr. Zwicker, that Don Person be elected as council president and Ed Prince as council vice president. So now, do we need to close nominations first on our process?
Any nominations?
Are there any other nominations? Okay, not hearing one.
Um, yes, I'd like to nominate myself. And I'd also like to just say that I recall that there was a, there was a, a practice that this council had at one time, where we had agreed that all council members, in addition to serving on all committees, would also equally share in serving as council president. Does anyone else have that recollection? And I, this being my sixth year, I'm just curious as to why I haven't had my turn yet.
Okay, so we have another nominee. That's all in one motion. Right.
You can treat it as, well, three of them.
Mr. Mayor, there's two separate things going on here. One is a nomination of two people for two positions. Excuse me. And one is a nomination of one person for one position. And I'm trying to remember on parliamentary procedure if the second nomination is a second. And I believe it does. So I think we need a second for the second nomination.
Okay, let's.
Didn't we, did we, for the first nomination, there was a motion?
Yeah, there's a motion and a second.
It isn't a nomination per se, so that required a second.
Right.
Sorry, council.
Sorry, I'm trying to think this through, whether a nomination requires a second.
Probably not.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
That's what you're probably.
I, yeah, I think that we could either open it up to nominations, which we've done some years, but then we end up at the same place ultimately as where, where I was going, which is that we just propose names and see if a name gets a majority.
And, and that is certainly a means by which to do that, yes. I honestly cannot, as I sit here, remember if a nomination requires a second.
So can we amend?
Okay. Jay seems to recall that it does not, so.
Can we amend Mr. Corman's motion to include all three candidates?
Procedurally, what you should do is vote on each independently rather than as, as a combined.
I see.
And I think since there's been a, more than one nomination for council president, if there are no other nominations, then you could close the nominations, and then the council could vote on which of the nominees they choose to be the council president, and then, and then you could move forward to council president pro tem.
The only, the flaw, the unfortunate thing is that the motion, which is, a pending motion on the floor, it's been seconded, has two parts. So we could amend the motion. I would propose that you amend the motion, break off, the motion that's on the floor and break it into two parts, and vote on one part or the other first, and then vote on the second part. I would propose that the first part you vote on would be on the, the president pro tem position, and then, well, first of all, you would have to vote on amending the motion. Once the motion is amended and broken into two parts, I would propose that you vote first on the president pro tem position, because there's only one, apparently only one nomination for that, so that should go through. And then you vote and have discussion on the second part, which is the president.
Okay.
That.
We'll, we'll work our way through.
Okay, and can I do? So the first vote would be on amending the motion.
And could I break it up as a friendly amendment?
Well, as a real technical matter, there's no such thing as a friendly amendment, but, but you could, you could withdraw the motion and start over.
Okay.
Or you could amend the motion.
Okay, I'll, I'll withdraw and start over if my second.
The danger there is that now we only have one nomination, so.
The nominations aren't closed.
Yeah, and they're, they're not closed, that's true. I'm okay with, I, I, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman?
I would withdraw my previous nomination, and then instead I would.
The person who seconded must also agree to withdraw.
Mr. Zwicker?
Ha, powerful.
That's scary.
So can I agree to a draw in exchange for nominating Don Person? No, I'm sorry. I will agree to a draw.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate Don Person for council president.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded, moved by Mr. Zwicker, seconded by Mr. Corman, nominating Don Person to be city council president in 2014.
Okay. There's, there's another nomination already of Mr. Taylor? Are there any other nominations, I guess would be the next question?
Are there any other nominations for the president position? All in, okay.
Nominations closed?
Wait, 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 I'm confused. I thought, are you, did you nominate yourself for president or pro tem?
Pro tem.
Pro tem.
Oh, I misunderstood. I thought it was for president.
No, 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 no.
I'm sorry.
No, 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 no.
Thank you.
I misunderstood.
Thank you, Marcy.
Okay, I'm sorry, I missed, I missed that, too. Okay, so, we can go ahead and.
Close the nominations?
Nominations and vote.
That's correct.
On the motion. All in favor for Don Person, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Now we can open up for another motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman?
I do, I would nominate, do I?
I, I would nominate, okay, so I would nominate Ed Prince for council president pro temp.
No second necessary.
Any other nominations?
For president pro temp.
Oh, yes. Do I have to renominate again?
No, because I think you're still on, that has not been withdrawn, so that's still on the table.
All right, that's what I thought.
In my opinion.
Okay, so both of them now are on.
Yes.
Any more nominations?
Right.
Okay, so nominations are closed. All in favor of Ed Prince for president pro temp, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, so one opposed, so that concludes, at that point in time, we've got six to one that Ed would be, okay. Thank you very much.
We got that. Was that six to one? Do we get a, we get a roll call on that, please?
It's your call.
Sure, we can have a roll call. All's in favor of Ed Prince, go ahead, Jason.
Okay. Mr. Corman?
Aye.
Ms. Palmer?
No.
Mr. Person?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Ms. Brier?
Aye.
Mr. Zwicker?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
No.
That's five ayes, two noes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, the ayes have it. All right. Mr. Corman, you're still up for new business.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Okay, next up, let's see, I have a committee of the whole meeting to announce for Monday, November 25th, at 6 o'clock PM. It'll be here in council chambers. We've got two items on the agenda. First is supported employment for workers with development disabilities, and the second is city center community plan annual report.
Okay.
And, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Ms. Palmer?
Yes, the Transportation Committee will meet this Thursday, November 21st, at 4:00 PM in the council conference room. There are two items on the agenda. The first one is donation of Erwin &amp; Scott South Carr Road property. And the second, now this is a long one, emerging issues in transportation, including review of transit service reductions for Renton, Rainier Avenue open house plans, process to identify 2014 grant application priorities, State Transportation Commission 1120 meeting briefing, CSATC project update, and I think that's the Central Sound Aviation Training Center? Did I get that right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Logan Avenue pavement restoration project update, Seventh and Shattuck project update, reschedule December 12th Transportation Committee to December 5th. Sounds like we have a lot coming up.
You've got a lot, a lot of construction projects.
Now, those are all briefings.
Okay.
And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Person?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. First, I will be unable to make the Transportation Committee on Thursday, so, but I know Mr. Taylor and Mrs. Palmer will handle that well.
Possibly, yeah.
And then, I'd like to ask the indulgence of the Public Safety Committee to see if we could meet 5:00 on November 25th in the council conference room to talk about item K.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay, I saw move?
Yes.
You have a second?
Second.
Been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Ms. Palmer, the Public Safety Committee meet on November 25th at 5:00 PM, council conference room, to discuss item K of the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Is that it, Mr. Person?
That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Prince?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Utilities Committee for November 25th has been canceled.
Okay. Ms. Brier?
I have no meetings to announce.
Okay. Mr. Zwicker?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and Mr. Taylor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Community Services Committee has a meeting on November the 25th at 5:30 PM, and we will be doing an appointment for the Renton Airport Advisory Committee for an individual with the last name of Alford. And then also, one of the other things, too, that I would like the council president to indulge me on in terms of adding perhaps to, if not next week's Committee of the Whole Meeting, but a future one before the year's out, is the issue regarding an expense reimbursement request that I made regarding my Washington DC trip. There seems to be some question about whether or not it is reimbursable, and I'd like to bring that before council.
Second?
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Taylor, seconded by Mr. Zwicker, that an issue regarding expense reimbursement for Mr. Taylor be referred to Committee of the Hall. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry, yes, Jason, I don't know who's talking to me.
[laughing]. Sorry, we need to identify the committee on committee members?
Oh, you're right.
You're right. That's the council president's responsibility.
Oh, yeah. Sorry. Okay, so do I, is it a nomination?
Normally been the president.
So it would, okay, so I, yeah, and I don't know if it's a nomination, but it would appear to be me, Mr. Person, and Mr. Prince, following council convention of the, this year's council president, next year's council president, next year's council president pro temp. So...
Does that require a motion, or just?
No, it's just identifying the members, and I believe the meeting needs to be announced.
Right, right, right. Good, thank you. Yeah, we, in fact, we realize the timing is kind of unusual this year, I think because of, well, we basically need to, we need to start thinking about our committee assignments for next year, and ordinarily, we'd have a week, I think, to make inputs. The council liaison is very instrumental often in helping organize, and for those people, actually, there's, you know, for our new council member, will want to put in our preferences, and I was going to say, it usually comes out that, for the most part, we can generally meet our preferences, or at least get two out of the three committees we're looking for, or whatever, but everybody needs to get those in. And I think, I think the one thing that, if I recall, is the ordinary time that we would have had, the committee on committee meetings might have been a week from now, but I don't think I'm going to announce it for a week from now. I think I'm going to delay it an extra week to just give a little more time. Can I ask that, Clerk, do you know of any issues with that?
There's no issues, because we'll have time to notice the public on that.
Okay, okay, that's good, and then that'll actually give our new council member-elect a little more time to understand what those committees are and to make some...
And that's December 2nd, to confirm?
Yes, although I don't think I have to formally announce the meeting yet, because I'll have the meeting of the 25th to formally announce it, but I think that's what we'd shoot for.
Okay.
Okay, good.
The other thing, Mr. Corman, if you, I don't know if the reimbursement issue with Mr. Taylor is, of timing is of the essence, but I don't know if you wanted to add that to your agenda on the 25th, that had to be announced tonight.
That, council's...
It's your call.
Okay.
Do you need to expand the time? I would assume that an hour was what was deemed necessary for those two, any of the whole items.
Why don't you do it on the 2nd?
You could start at 5:30, since we canceled...
Utilities is canceled.
No, no, you've got Community Services at 5:30.
That's right.
And I just announced the 5:00 PM Public Safety Committee meeting.
Mr. Mayor, on the 2nd, we tentatively have scheduled the 2014 legislative priorities discussion, so we could, that won't last more than an hour, so we could expand the time of the Committee of the Whole Meeting on the 2nd. Okay, well, if time isn't of the essence, you don't have to report that out till next week. You don't want to do it next Monday.
If the 2nd suitable, I don't mind either one. I don't mind doing it on Monday. I think Ms. Palmer makes a good point about the timing. The two items we have, I'd be ashamed to cut into those, probably.
We already postponed item one...
Yeah.
... from the night that we didn't have a quorum.
Just one other suggestion, then I'll leave it alone, but Mr. Taylor, it looks like your meeting probably would only take 15 minutes.
It would be a very short meeting.
You could actually start 15 minutes...
Absolutely.
Okay, I like that suggestion, so...
We could, we go 5:45 on the Committee of the Whole.
Okay, good suggestion. And do we, do we, okay, and then we'll figure out whether to take it up at the beginning or the end. Okay, so with that, I'd like to formally announce then, I'm going to reschedule Committee of the Hall for November 25th to a 5:45 start time. And add a third item to the agenda, and it's the Mr. Taylor's request for reimbursement for the trip to Washington, or for partial expenses for the trip to Washington.
Okay.
Okay, very good. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Last item, audience comment. Was there anybody who didn't get a chance to address the council? What's the wish of the council?
We adjourn. Second?
Been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by several people, that we adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.